Um, please rise for the invocation by Dylan Douglas and the pledge by Mr. Jensen. All right, heads in. Pray for safety also for our first responders here in the community. Guidance for our armed. Also grant guidance. Pray for the continued recovery efforts here. Image would be restored. Health as well.
By the United States of America. Republic. On nation. Is well.
Okay, we do have a quorum tonight. I need to get our approval of minutes from the previous meeting, February 20th, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes from February 20th meeting.
I'll second that. I have a motion second. All those in favor? Carries. I need approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Chairman, I make a motion for approval of tonight's minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the planning commission is a recommending body of the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the commissioners for final action on March 18th, 2025. If you wish to address the board of commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Stoller to obtain the request to speak for them. Any requests with a public hearing will have a minimum of 10 minutes permitted per side for the presentation of opinions, data, and evidence by proponents or opponents of a request. The applicant will be allowed to speak first. Any member of the public may speak after. Either side may cede their time during the hearing if they so desire. Getting into the debate vision, uh, debate agenda, new business on the concept plan. Danielle with Larry Delmar subdivision.
Yes, sir. This is a request for concept plan approval for a single family subdivision off Bill Dorn Road. Property is located on the south side of Bill Dorn Road, um, towards White Oak Road and is currently zoned RA residential agricultural. It is planned to be developed under that existing zoning, so there's no rezoning request associated with this application. You can see there is some topography on the site. There is an existing stream that crosses the property. Generally, the property falls from Bill Dorn Road towards the stream and then rises back up from the stream on the other side. Uh, in this property is intended to be subdivided into 26 larger lots. The minimum lot size in RA is two and a half acres and the lots do meet that standard. Uh, many of the lots do have frontage on Bill Dorn Road, although not all of them will have their own driveways. You can see some shared access easements for some of the lots. That's due to the curve on Bill Dorn Road. So to ensure adequate site distance for traffic safety, uh, some of those lots will be sharing those access easements. Uh, there's also seven lots at the back of the property that do not have road frontage and those are also accessed via easements. Uh, the easements are shown at 30 feet in width complying with county code. This property will be developed on septic and they do have submitted the initial soil survey that's been reviewed by the health department. It does show that there is suitable soil on each lot for a septic system, uh, so it is sufficient to move forward at this time. And staff is recommending approval.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the conceptual plan for Larry Delmar subdivision off Bill Dorn Road.
Second. I have a motion on the floor and second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Massage operators license.
Mr. Chairman, this is a request for two massage operators licenses, both at the same location, 1106 Furious Lane, Suite B. Uh, the first one is Elizabeth Cybers, DBA Liz Cybers Massage and Skincare. She's providing both onsite and mobile massage services. And the last one is Carrie Fuller. DBA Bluebird Bodywork on permanent massage only. Uh, both these applicants meet the requirements of the ordinance. Staff recommends approval of both.
Okay, do I have a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation to approve, um, both massage partners' licenses at 1106 Furious Ferry.
Second. A motion on the floor and second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Public hearing section, zoning from C. Dylan?
Sir, this is an application 513. Current zonings for those two. As always. CC Community Commercial. Um, those restaurant and bank with a drive. Shows the location of the two parcels, again at the intersection, Autumn Trail and, uh, off exit one. And again, the current zoning for the two parcels, the front parcel, um, owned C2 General Commercial back in 2016. However, at that time, the Lewiston Road widening was ongoing. That road widening took, uh, much of the buildable space from that parcel to the point developed without variances. Not approved for the site. Site has, uh, since been undeveloped and remained undeveloped. So now this proposal poses to add that first single family parcel immediately behind that one to the development. The addition of this buildable space would see a code compliant concept plan that we'll see here. Second. An aerial view of the site, um, you can see front parcel up to that parcel immediately behind it has been developed. Uh, these are the two plats for the two separate parcels and existing site photos. As you can see, the topo leading up to Lewiston Road, that's kind of where we're oriented. We're looking from the back of the parcel furthest away from up towards the frontage. You can see there's significant topo leading to Lewiston Road. Kind of attributed to the lack of buildable front parcel by itself, hence the addition to the, the, uh, extra parcel to the proposal this time. Um, this is the proposed concept plan again for a restaurant and a bank with a drive through. Look along, uh, Lewiston Road is kind of planned south here. So the lot line shared with, uh, residential zoning at the back of this development is northernmost, uh, as we're looking at the plan. It shows a code compliant buffer. Um, this concept plan shows no need for any kind of variances. Beats all the Columbia County code requirements affiliated uh, with buffering against single family residential development. Um, that buffer is 30 feet wide. It would landscaping, uh, as well as opaque fencing aspect as well against that. Um, beyond that, uh, staff is also proposing several additions that will in it. Um, one of those you can see somewhat laid out in this concept plan. Both of the road frontages for this development will be served by one single driveway as well as, uh, both businesses and would be served by one single sign. Both of those road frontage being, road frontages being um, beyond that, there's other conditions that address, uh, impact in the area. Some worth mentioning are related to architecture of the buildings to continue to match, uh, kind of build cohesion with the larger commercial development in the area. Well, as, uh, again, conditions related signage to match the grounding area as well. There's also, uh, conditions included, um, that are kind of carryover conditions from the initial commercial zoning back in 2016 that limit hours of operation of the businesses on the site to include any deliveries and pickups, including trash pickup. Um, to, uh, I believe hours I can look at second are 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And then they'll also, uh, this development will be required to submit a photometric plan when they submit their site plans. Development as well to ensure that there's no, uh, light pollution impact on the adjacent development as well. Um, finally, uh, somewhat in line with the commercial zoning, uh, that we saw on the zoning map. Uh, the mixed use activity center affiliated with this area, uh, is only extended to the front parcel currently. However, if you notice, uh, on this slide and again also a slide that we looked at, the rear lot lines of the commercial parcels, both to the south of this development as well as across Autumn Trail, all have relatively uniform rear lot lines against the residential back behind them. Adding this, uh, residentially zoned parcel to this proposal, should this, uh, quest be granted, approved, uh, would kind of create a uniform rear lot line across all of those development, uh, commercial parcels, uh, kind of creating a pretty uniform separation between residential development behind them as well as the commercial development closer to Lewiston. Um, we're not, uh, the request isn't, uh, posing any kind of intrusion further than, oh, the commercial development that's already in the surrounding area is pre-existing. Um, given all of these factors, as well as some of the conditions that we can see here on the screen, and many of them are carrying over 2016 rezoning. Uh, but given, uh, all the conditions that staff has mentioned, we're recommending of this request.
Okay, thank you, Dylan. Owners or applicant of the rezoning of these properties for 26 Lewiston and 55136 would like to come forward and, uh, speak on behalf of this. Speak your name and address, please.
My name is Jonathan Sevis. I live 3737 Inverness Way. Part of this. My name is Jonathan. I work with Maybaum Commercial. Broker representing the owners of the property and Matt Demires, the developer. Matt Demires is also the developer. The Pinnacle Bank and the Restaurant. You guys have any questions about the development?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Any other members of the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this? Anyone in the audience who'd like to come forward and speak against this? We'll just take, uh, a couple, just, uh, uh, please, um, say your name and address.
Static electricity. Uh, good evening. My name is Doug Thornton. I live at 5123 Autumn Trail. Uh, prepared a series of notes questioning, uh, the rezoning, uh, granted, not knowing that this was already approved back in 2016, uh, but to expand the lot, uh, some of the things that, that we have concerns, I have concerns with specifically was, was this part of the county's initial master plan or was there a comprehensive plan covering, uh, additional additional land requirements specifically moving from a commercial zoned area into the residential zoning area? Uh, originally, obviously, this was residentially zoned, as you can see on the map. Was that done in error or was that specific since this has always been, since for a long time, this has been a residentially zoned area? Is there a need or a purpose to rezone? Uh, there's sufficient land to meet the proposal, uh, for the, for the Olive Garden, for the bank. You could go south of, uh, Sugar Creek Road, south of Area C2 and the Circle K there along Lewiston. Additionally, there's a TPS across the way that would facilitate and is already zoned commercially and plenty of land and space available to put these two, these two facilities. Um, I'd also like to address the environmental impact. Currently, after the Popeyes has been built, uh, there's a significant amount of rain and water runoff that is coming off of the concrete, off of the pavement, uh, that flows obviously downhill because gravity works. Uh, it flows in front of my neighbor's property. It flows in front of my property. Uh, we get consistent garbage that flows uh, down the drainage ditch through and under our driveways, clogs everything up, and then ultimately is deposited down in, uh, down in the creek, a couple houses down. So there's, there's more than just, at least for the residents, it, one resident, I'm, I'm not going to speak for everybody here. Uh, but there's a significant impact with noise pollution, light pollution, uh, water pollution, environmental impact with water runoff and and just the fact that there's other places available to build these properties. Any questions for me, sir?
I don't have any questions. Have any questions?
I don't have any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Tom Petrick. I live at 378 Leets Court. That's in the Autumn Trail Sugar Creek subdivision. And really, my only question is, everything I heard this evening, I heard nothing about the impact to neighborhood and to Lewiston Road with regards to traffic. Y'all know the traffic is significant in that area. The, but my, my concern is that the exit and entrance for the Olive Garden will be off of Lewiston. Excuse me, off of Autumn Trail. That'll impact the residents in Autumn Trail. None of, none of the discussion did hear anything about anybody ever looking into the impact, both, like I say, not only on our, on our street, but on Lewiston Road specifically during rush hour. So do you all know? I look at Dylan there and I said, does anybody have ever done a traffic study to understand the implications?
Yeah. So, I mean, this rezoning application, along with every rezoning application takes in is reviewed by traffic engineering as a part of the review process. They actually included a condition, um, here that you can see just to kind of demonstrate that they um, conditions, uh, our office also set in place are shown here as well. So, uh, the part of kind of the traffic review for this development, um, it was dictated that this, uh, development will have one single driveway that connects to Autumn Trail. So yes, it does have an ingress egress proposed and, uh, shown here on the concept plan. Initially, uh, kind of in the southeastern most corner of the plan as we show on this slide, shows an access from Lewiston Road. That access has an existing, uh, right turn only lane into it as well from Lewiston Road. Um, those are the two accesses proposed with this. Um, this is just a concept plan, but the condition from traffic engineering says that that Autumn Trail driveway shown on this concept plan actually is going to need to migrate per the traffic engineering condition. Line up directly across from the Popeyes parcel that's just on the other side of Autumn Trail as well. So the traffic applications of this application were reviewed again by our traffic engineering. I can't speak to their review because I'm not a traffic engineer myself, but it was reviewed and that is the traffic, uh, kind of flow that's envisioned through this concept plan currently, uh, you know, based on staff and traffic engineering.
So do you understand or do they understand the capacity, what's currently available there?
Yeah.
And how do we know that that's going to be sufficient? So we're not sitting at the traffic lights, particularly during dinner hours, 6:00 to 8:00 PM, for example. Traffic on Lewiston Road is significant. I mean, I, I know what it's like now and I can tell you.
That our, our traffic engineers do review, you know, trip generation affiliated with every, again, application that we bring in. So I would assume that that was part of their assessment and review as well.
Okay. Well, I hear assume, is there some way for the residents to get a copy, understand what the traffic engineer? What was presented to, to them? And, I mean, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yes, I'd like to see not evidence, but to see the information so we can ourselves assess whether we think it's adequate.
So is your concern that they're going to turn right or left or what? Tell me what your concern is.
Both. I'm concerned with the folks turning into our subdivision, backing up. Yes, there is a right turn lane.
Yeah.
If the, if the, if the numbers of vehicles that we see at this Olive Garden are similar to the current Olive Garden in Richmond County, that's a significant amount of increase. I'm worried about traffic backing up on Lewiston. I'm also worried about during rush hour times, us getting out of our subdivision. I can see us cycling there several lights cases before we'll be able to get out. And of course, you got Krogers right there. There is just so much traffic in that area and now, and we're so close to I-20 that there is, there's so much traffic there that this additional load concerns me. I'm not sure, you know, it might be okay for Lewiston for now, but as, you know, we can only imagine there's going to be more commercial development going down Lewiston Road in the future.
Yeah. I mean, so we can get and again, a traffic study is not going to, there, there's going to be enough capacity. That's the thing. There will be. And it's going, it's not really going to tell you a ton. Now, we can get you numbers on it and you can look at it.
Yeah, I'd like to see the numbers. I would, I'm very interested.
Again, the block pass on that road.
It is, well.
And I, I guess I would add too, I think the, you know, the driveway relocation to to align, the traffic condition proposed is to align with the Popeyes, uh, Pinnacle Bank, uh, driveway. I mean, so the people leaving Olive Garden bank proposed would be headed to the light. That's going to be the throat length of that, you know, that backup. They're not going to, they're not going to go right to turn, to turn left on that. So I think that's.
Neighborhood, our whole neighborhood comes out of that exit.
Yeah, I understand that. So I don't think that that's more than a signal length of, you know, queuing line. And again, the other aspect I would add is, is I think, you know, as part of not just th- these lights in this corridor, but lights throughout the county, they're constantly monitoring for timing and they may run, uh, sequence longer in peak periods than they would in non-peak periods. And so you'll see that throughout the county. Uh, there are left turn lanes that, uh, maybe will run for 30 seconds length versus, you know, off peak period, they might only run for 10 seconds and then go to a flashing yellow. So, you know, they'll, they'll constant, you know, our traffic engineering department will continue to monitor the signal and, and they have the cameras on there to override that if need be in, in those peak periods or adjust that timing sequence, uh, if it becomes a, you know, consistent issue.
I'm, I'm just concerned that.
Sure.
And I, I'm, having lived there, living there now and knowing how much trouble it is and how much traffic and the density of the commercial development that's already in that area. Now we're going to stick more. I, I would, I would request that the traffic engineering folks could present to you and to us why they're so certain that this is going to work before you approve it. If, if it truly is that way, then I have no, no objections, but until we know for a fact that development will not impact us negatively, I would ask you respectfully not to submit it to the committee.
Yeah. And, and I guess let me clarify just for everybody's benefit. So the planning commission would ultimately make a recommendation, whether that's tonight or, you know, at a subsequent meeting, but they would make a recommendation to the full board. Um, you know, at that time, the board of commissioners could certainly ask for additional information. Um, and in the meantime, you know, between now and that board meeting, they could certainly get that information from traffic engineering if there's, you know, a concern for additional information on that. Um, but they would have the opportunity to ask any questions of staff, uh, and traffic and the engineering department would be at that meeting as well to be able to answer those questions if, if they were.
So how would the how can we get in touch with the traffic? Understand why they made the commitment.
I would say let us handle that. We'll get back to you. Does Dylan have your contact information? Sounds like y'all talked. Okay. Is there email on there?
Uh, yes, it is.
All right.
Very good.
We'll get in touch with you.
All right. Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lindsay Conley. I live at 5129 Autumn Trail. I bought my home and I think many of, I speak for most residents in our neighborhood because of we have the land, we have the wildlife. Not to have Popeyes is my next door neighbor. When I bought my home, there was a home there. I had neighbors. That's one of the beautiful parts of the Autumn Trail Sugar Creek neighborhood is we have the space, but we are still back off the road enough. I personally have Popeyes all hours of the day and night. I have their dumpsters being dumped at 5:00 AM. I have the traffic and the noise from Popeyes and all that it encompasses with that. The amount of garbage that we have now got. The entire neighborhood, the entrance of our neighborhood is no longer beautiful. It's littered, it's garbage, and the amount of traffic does impede us. I have whenever they do anything at Popeyes, I hear it in my home. I bought my home for privacy. And now, I, except I have a bank next door to me. I have Popeyes next door to me. You could see directly into my backyard because of the retention pond that was now put in. The amount of impact it has on our neighborhood is unimaginable. So my driveway, you don't see my house from the street. I have a gravel driveway. I'm having to get my driveway regravelled again because I have a creek. Anytime the wa- it rains, forget Halene. There's a whole creek, a whitewater rafting creek going through my front yard. And again, like my neighbor said, there's, yeah, there's a big drain pipe there, but the amount of trash and everything is in there now. I lost so many trees from Halene because of the water erosion. I don't have very many trees in my yard now. Many of us lost a lot with Halene, but I've lost my privacy. And so to then go in and say, somebody that doesn't live there is not impacted on a daily basis, it's easy to say, oh, it's just an Olive Garden. There's already a turn lane. It won't make a difference. It does to those of us that live there. Because we love where we live. We love our neighborhood. We've been fighting to get our sign put back up front from the Lewiston Road widening project. I understand, yes, there is a little bit of a driveway there. But now then we're going to add, we're going to add more traffic, more noise, more congestion. It's already hectic to get in and out, to come home. And then add in more. Between the water erosion, the property values, the traffic. What's that going to do to my property value? I didn't ask, I didn't sell my property that next door to me for $3 million. They moved on. They took their money and ran. I'm still here with my children. We can't go out in the house, we can't go out in the yard really because everybody sees in my yard. There is nothing left. That's a, that is a community that's very coveted by us because of those things. We feed the deer. We're not going to get that again. I get, I have the parking lot lights shining in my bedroom. But let me just add another one. So I do please respectfully request not to approve this.
All right, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak against this? Just if this repetition, you know, if something new, we'd like to hear it. Speak your name and.
My name's Julie Thornton. I'm at Autumn Trail 5123. Again, going back to the traffic. While you think there's sufficient space, there's only one exit to that Olive Garden. It will be onto Autumn Trail. Entrance is only one exit. So what happens when they can't make a left-hand turn onto Autumn Trail? They're going to make a right and come down into the neighborhood and use people's driveways as a turnaround so they can get out on Autumn Trail. Mine's going to be the first driveway they hit. Who is going to upkeep my driveway when all of these people are using my driveway as a turnaround? I'd also like to reiterate the point my husband made. There is sufficient commercial property less than a mile away. Why is that not being utilized instead of rezoning residential homes? The lot's right there. Other than it's probably more expensive and harder for people to get in. Leave commercial proper, commercial. I'm sorry that whoever owns the commercial lot can't develop it. That's not my problem. But moving commercial into our neighborhood, because then what's next? Going to buy the next home and the next home, next home, all the way down Autumn Trail. Lining up the back of the commercial properties is not something we're concerned about. That it looks nice from an aerial map. There will be traffic issues because there will be no way to stop people from using neighbor, the neighborhood as a turnaround to get out of the one exit, fight two entries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cassandra Wyatt. I live at 13 Kingsbury Court in Grove Town. Um, I have a concern, um, number one, um, the water, the, the soil erosion and the water erosion and all the trash that's in the water. Our neighborhood feeds into the Columbia County watershed. So having all the contaminants in the water, plus all the runoffs from the interstate, I mean, from the interstate, from the road, all the oil, all the gas, all the stuff from the, the vehicles, plus the, the airborne aerial, uh, pollution that's going into the water supply affects not only the, the community, but also the entire Columbia County water supply. Um, number two, I-20, okay? We have a problem I-20. If you put more, more stuff, there used to be a federal highway law that you couldn't have, um, any kind of commercial concerns within three to five miles, depending on what state you were in, within a federal highway. Because it was needed for disaster concerns. It was needed for, um, mobilization for the military. We have a military base here, even though there's only one brigade that's mobile. Okay? Um, this has an effect. If something were to happen, we have SRS here. We have no such. This has an effect, if something were to happen, we have SRS here, we have no such agency, we have NSA. Bringing those, 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 bringing those military and, and national security concerns to the United States, to this area, has made us the number one target. I'm retired 43 years with the Red Cross. I'm mobile staff, I deploy with the soldiers into combat, I just retired because my husband got sick. I was a station manager at Fort Gordon for the Red Cross, so I, I go to all the security meetings and that type of thing, I have a security clearance. This concerns me, the fact that at any time Fort Gordon, Fort Eisenhower can be mobilized, it can change its mission. It's a trade-off base right now, but there is a force comm element to Fort Gordon, okay? What's going to happen if you block the interstates? Right now, you, at, at, at peak rush hour, traffic is backed up on I-20. It is supposed to be a freeway, it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be free egress. You have truckers who are doing the speed limit, they can't slow down in time. You need to look at the number of accidents we've had since you've put the comming in there, since you've actually added those businesses, we've had an increase in all the accidents we've had up on the interstate, trying to get off of I-20 coming from Augusta to Grove Town to go to Thompson, to go to Atlanta. It impacts on Fridays and Saturday nights. You also have an increase in, probably with the, with the alcohol issues, with people driving, trying to get up there and forgetting the comming issues and stuff like that. If the traffic lights go out, people don't know how to drive that. They put that four-foot passenger, I mean, pedestrian fence in there, I mean, the concrete wall. If the traffic lights go out, by the time you start coming off of I-20 from Atlanta, it's too late to see where you're at, you might have a, have a collision, okay? So the traffic concerns me, the water concerns me, I-20 concerns me. The fire department, we have a fire department that responds to accidents on I-20. It responds to everything down that area. They can get out, I mean, even with the lights and the ambulances, you still have hard time. I mean, I get over, people don't get over, people don't know how to drive anymore. They don't get over for the fire department. The fire department's had to go around them and everything like that. So if you increase the traffic, what is that going to make for the response issues? And a lot of these neighborhoods only have one point of egress into these neighborhoods. It was, used to be a law that you had to have two points in case there was a disaster, okay? So if you had a tornado down here, how would these people get out? We learned this with the hurricane, because we had a lady who was on life, not life support, but she's on medicine, and we had to, we had to cut our way out so we could get her out, so she could get to dialysis. So if the traffic is backed up, there's some elderly people that live back there, we have Canadian geese, they used to be on the endangered species list, I think they still are, you know, so this is all, all a concern. And I don't think anybody's looking at the big picture. There are concerns here with the National Highway Plan, the national security of this country, because of Fort Gordon, and what it's going to do to the interstate, having the traffic backed up. The, everybody's talking about TPS on the other side, and, and where the gas station used to be. I don't think that should be developed at all, I think that should be a safe space, because you have a lot of traffic now backed up, and it's, and it's stalling I-20. The, the area is developing all the way through, Evans, Fort Gordon, there's, they're building the area up from the other side of Fort Gordon, going up Lewiston Road into Grove Town proper. Now, when they start building all those things up there, and I'm, I'm all for free enterprise. I understand that people have to make money, they have to make a living, but there needs to be some greater good here to do the right thing for the, for the amount of the people that we have, but also for the community in the long run, also for the, the nature that we have, that we have, because if we kill all this stuff off, we're not going to have anything, and the trees and everything. So, I mean, I'm sorry, but-
Okay, we're at the timeline now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll have one more, again.
Good afternoon. My name is Pablo Stanley. I live at 5098 Autumn Trail. Thank you for this opportunity to address the commission. One thing I want to make sure that, before you make a decision, we'd love for you guys to go and drive onto that corner. It's a great picture right here of how do you get into our neighborhood. The entrance to any neighborhood is very, very important. Anytime you go to sell your home, the value of your home starts at the entrance of your neighborhood. This is going to decrease the value of our homes and our property taxes, and you should take that into consideration. But what I've noticed, living down the road, is that when people go to Popeyes, they get on the phone, they start walking, they walk into our neighborhoods, and then walk back up. I have had many of people leave Popeyes the wrong way, come down, there's no way to get out. That Autumn Trail is very narrow, and what they have to do is they go, have to go into our neighborhoods and pick a, 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 a entrance, a driveway, and turn around. Not good, guys. I moved to Columbia County for my family's beautiful land lots and the access to nature and safety, and this is a direct impact to that. The other thing I like to point out is the terrain on the hill. It is a very sharp turn off of the main road, and it's on a hill, so you're coming down and then have to turn very sharply into the driveway. It does not make any sense, guys. When I come home after working 12-hour days, and I'm ready to get home, and there's a backup line because people are going to these restaurants, not good. There is other locations that can be readily accessible for less cost, and probably less the land development, because it's a terrible terrain, and that's why they had to buy the second home, or the, the home, and re-converted. Water retention, we are growing at such a fast pace that there are many issues with water retention across the county. You guys know that. Every time it starts to rain, it's a difficult time to capture. We have a very important creek right down the street, less than a mile, and it's already over full, overran when it rains. And having the retention on Autumn Trail, as we go down into our beautiful neighborhood with this fence that's barbed wired, it looks hideous. Who would want to live in our neighborhood? Come on. Go, go to the location and you look at it. It's not going to work, and there's other places to do that. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to recommend approval with conditions of RZ 250301, zoning from R1 to NC 2 to CC at 426 Lewiston Road and Autumn Trail.
Second.
I have a motion on the fourth floor, and duly seconded, all those in favor? Motion carries. We're just a recommending body to the commissioners. This will be taken up March 18th by the commissioners. We're a recommending body. Decision. March, March 18th, 6 o'clock, will be right here back in the scene. Okay, um, let's see. Okay, uh- Okay, Dylan, next order of business?
Sir, the next item on the agenda is an application for variance at 738 Campana Drive. It shows the location of the parcel in the Bell Tower subdivision, north of Harley-McManus Road, uh, Road and east of Riverside Park. Um, the zoning for that subdivision is R2, and this is an aerial photo of the site, again, off Campana Drive and Bell Tower flat for that parcel, it's outlined. This request is for a reduced front setback on this single parcel. Similar variances all along Campana Drive, for actually 16 other parcels on Campana Drive have previously been approved. They were also for 10-foot reductions on the front setbacks on those lots. Those were granted, and many, if not all, of those homes at this point have been constructed. So if this approval were to be granted, it would kind of appear uniform along the streetscape with those parcels that have already been constructed with the setback that's also pro, uh, proposed by this application. Part of the reason that both those parcels and now this request, you know, were made is because of topography at the rear of the lots. This is an existing site photo of that lot, you can see some of the upslope at the rear of the parcel. The applicant's rationale for their request is that moving the homes 10 feet forward brought them more functional backyard space, back behind the house, obviously, if the house moves forward, more of the lot is available at the rear to have flat backyard space. This is a grading photo of the parcel, and you can also see some of the grading on the adjacent parcels, pretty severe. This is a site plan, it shows the home, if it were constructed in compliance with the 30-foot front setback, and also the line where kind of that front setback would migrate should this proposal granted. See with the grading on some of the adjacent sites, there was actually a retaining wall installed along the rear of those parcels. The applicant is unsure at this time if he's also going to want or need a retaining wall, so staff actually has a condition of approval recommended, that if a retaining wall on this parcel is rec, you know, is requested by the applicant, that it, although it kind of will probably run a similar line to the existing retention wall along the other lot, along the adjacent lots, there at the separating lot line with the adjacent parcel, that it would have a, a joint or a separation that way, of anything, any damage were to occur to the different sections of the wall, they would not adversely impact. This is a concept elevation of the house, again, this is matching relatively uniform with other homes built along Campana Drive, that will present, again, a uniform presentation along that street, based on staff has been presented. And so given that, staff is recommending approval with the condition that we had discussed previously regarding possible retention.
Thank you, Dylan. Owners or applicant, R Lewis Construction LLC, or Ron Lewis, come forward and speak on behalf? Speak your name and address.
My name's Ron Lewis. I live at 3056 Leaning Oakway, Martinez. The, the information that Dylan has given is, is, I think, pretty self-explanatory as to what we're, what I'm proposing to do. I am the builder, and there was some discussion after the initial zoning various, variances were granted on the, on the other lots by the developer. It was, in my opinion, probably an oversight that this wasn't included. I actually owned the lot at the time, and by the time it was known, it was a little bit too late to do that. But there is the, the, the existing retaining wall ends at the, at the lot line, at my lot line, so that has kind of exacerbated what I can do, and I've got to kind of get in there and start grading and figure, figure out what I'm going to do, whether I'll have to add some retention wall, or if I can make it work without the retention. From an aesthetic perspective, it would be aesthetically more pleasing if I, if I did not have to, you know, add the retaining wall. But I'll, I'll answer any questions.
Okay, I'll have any questions?
Nope, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Any, any other member of variance like to speak in favor of this? Any member of the audience like to speak against this? None? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion and recommend approval with condition of file VA 25-0301, reducing the front setback at 738 Campana Drive to 45 feet from the center line.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor and second, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Okay, do we have any legal matters tonight?
Not tonight.
Got any staff or commissioner comments? Okay. I have a motion on the floor to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Fourth and second, all those in favor?